Go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's 7:02. I want to say thank you to all of you for coming out this evening. I know you've got other things to do with your lives, and I appreciate you being here. If we could have a roll call. Counselor Long? Here. Counselor Combs?
Here.
Counselor Myers? Absent. Counselor Ratliff?
Here.
Yeah, long. Thank you. Public comments. Comments be accepted from the general public concerning topics not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes speaking time. Total of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Reference will be given to Talawka residents and in compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meetings Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the City Council on any issue or topic raised. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council? Dr. Uzah.
Just thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to bring your attention to an item that we had last time I talked about regarding the Chief Financial Officer. I attended the ethics course regarding familiarity of the client complex of interest, and it says the threat that due to close relationship with the client, it may become too sympathetic to clients' interests or accepting clients' work product. The illustration is one of your former partners or a former professional employee takes up his issue with the client. This is out of our ethics items. The second thing I'd like to bring your attention to in Northeastern Health System, as you noticed that they have hired a couple of people. Now, most likely, given their occupation, they'll be occupying the building by Dr. Childers. But your information, the foundation has purchased that property and taken it off to tax rolls. Okay? And the school system needs a lot of taxes. So that means that we no longer have two major buildings contributing to our tax base. So I just want to make sure with that particular two chance actions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Uzah. Would anyone else like to address the council? Singhun? Item number four, discussion possible action regarding the 2019 Christmas parading details and possible street closures. Chief King?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. This will be almost exactly like what was presented last time in the chamber report. Parking spaces will be, we're asking parking spaces be cleared at 2:00, beginning 2:00 p.m. on the day of the parade, December 13th. Some streets will start closing at 4:00 for float placement, and then the page has 6:00 or 6:15 for other street closures. We'll probably, the police department will probably start closing those more like 5:30 to help funnel traffic out of the parade route. And that way, by 6:15, we are completely secure and vacant of vehicles on Muskogee and Grand Avenue. So we would ask the parking spaces that the council approve or condone closing a parking space at 2:00 p.m., Crafton Street from Grand to Oklahoma at 4:00, and the additional streets as needed along Muskogee Avenue, Grand Avenue, starting with Chickasaw on the south end, all the way up to North Street on the north end.
Is there any discussion?
So makes so long as what you're saying with the 5:30 thing doesn't necessarily affect what was given to us by Cindy right for this holiday parade. Do you mean we don't need to amend?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, that's really gonna be, on the day of, that's gonna be my purview, really, anyway, on when my guys need to start. It takes a while to get cars out of the parade route that are driving up and down Muskogee Avenue, so.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented, then.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any comments? If not, roll call.
Counselor Long? Yes. Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Item number five, discussion possible action to terminate Daniel Wykel, laborer from the Cemetery Department. Please.
Yes. This is pretty straightforward. Mr. Wykel's had a long history of attendance issues, and we did give him an opportunity to resign, and he chose not to take that opportunity. He's not present here tonight, and so the recommendation is just to separate his employment effective October the 31st.
I make a motion to approve as recommended.
Second.
What was the, I mean, what was he, what was he trying?
Attendance.
Yeah, attendance.
Yes. He actually, you know, just a quick, just to make you guys more comfortable, in December of last year, he was given a final warning with Richard, myself, Ed Carr, and at that time, going back 12 months, he had been absent a total of 192 hours. So, you know, we had kind of that talk with him, and since that time, he, you know, he had a couple of months where things were well, but then he started going back into the same patterns and just kind of as a summary, and since January 1st, 2019, to October the 30th, he had been absent 21.5 days, and was tardy 32 days. And, you know, he had some hard times. Richard has been very, very patient, very accommodating. I counted probably more tardies than Richard did, you know, but I came from a manufacturing background, where if you're one minute late, you're one minute late, and you're late to work. But, so that's just the recommendation. And he's, Richard has been very patient, very accommodating, has given him every chance and all.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Questions? Roll call.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long? Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilor.
Discussion and possible action to appoint Suzanne Myers to the Board of Adjustment. There are, Board of Adjustment is required to have two members from the Planning Commission. Suzanne is a member from the Planning Commission. We have an open spot for that position, and so she is agreeing to step over into this board as well.
I make a motion to approve as recommended.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions? Comments? Roll call.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long? Yes. Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number seven, discussion possible action to establish the Streets and Sidewalk Sales Tax Advisory Committee. I believe you each have a copy of that definition or that document defining.
Will these meetings, will these meetings have an agenda? I mean, will they be set up in a similar fashion with an agenda?
Correct.
And who's gonna host the meetings?
They'll be working with Wang from the Street Department primarily.
So Wang will conduct the meeting? I'm just trying to figure out the, so he'll conduct the meetings, and Tess will take the minutes? Is that what I saw?
Well, we haven't determined exactly who will be taking the minutes, but minutes will be taken. Like other committees, once you inform them, they sort of pick their own officers as far as who would be chairing it.
So there will be that?
That structure.
Structure of Chair, Secretary, Director?
Yes. One from each ward plus one floater.
Do we appoint one from all?
Yes, we have some suggestions in mind that we're.
I think it says the mayor appoints it now, right?
The mayor appoints on all of them.
With the approval of the council.
That's right. I can do nothing without you.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
My second.
Have a motion and a second. Further questions? Comments? Singhun, can we have roll call?
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long? Yes. Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number eight, discussion and presentation of a report from the Healthy Food Retail Task Force.
What? I have a couple other things that were not in your packet, just to reference, if you would like.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you for your time. Part of the resolution is to present the existing data prior to the resolution adoption as to what led to this adoption of a resolution for healthy food access in the community. That document should have been in your packet, I believe.
Yes.
Do you all have any questions about that document? Okay. So based on that report, we exposed the barriers that we identified in the community based on the various assessments that we have conducted, and there are multiple barriers, but we decided to focus on the five. And so I provided you all with a condensed version of that report, just so that you can see the key points of those five areas that were adopted in the resolution. And if you have any questions about them at any time, I'm happy to help. I've also included a copy of the bylaws that were adopted at the meeting that we had in October, just for your reference. Again, if you have questions about them, I'm happy to answer. And then I also included a proposed work plan. We did a program share at our meeting in October to kind of identify what existing programs there are, where we want to start focusing our efforts towards. And so we didn't go into the work plan for adoption because we wanted to see what the outcomes were from our program share. We planned to adopt a work plan in January and then start moving forward on that work plan over the next couple of years. And so if you have any questions about the work plan, or if there's something you'd like to see added to the work plan for our task force to work on, I'm open to that, and I'd be happy to add it in and speak to the task force about that. Just the general update of what's happened, we have task force membership in full effect. There are city representatives, farmers market, DHS SNAP, the Health Department. We have a USDA Farmer School grant who has a representative who's serving on that, and of course, our Healthy Living Program, OSU Extension, NSU, an evaluator. So we have a very diverse group of individuals who are committed to working towards these issues. Other than that, we won't need to get until January, and we're just moving forward on the addressing the barriers that we see in our community for food access. Any questions? Thank you, again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Item number nine, discussion to adopt ordinance number 1292-2019, changing the zoning of the property located at 116 West Morgan Street from two family dwelling District R2 to general commercial district C2 for the following real estate to which, Lot 6 and 7, Lot 41, Talawka lots, Cherokee County, Oklahoma.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Having a little technical difficulties with our computer back there, so you're not gonna have any visual assistance on the screen, but hopefully you'll find in your packet a staff report with a map on the last page that identifies the property. I think most of you guys are familiar with this property. It's located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Morgan and College. The property owner met with me to discuss the options of rezoning. It's currently R2 zoning district, and the use is multifamily. So the way it exists today is non-conforming. So the property owner wants to at least obtain conforming zoning use, and then obviously, based on their application, they're asking for C2 general commercial, and so they're looking to get the highest and best use. Some of the recent rezoning history in the area includes the Franklin Castle straight west. I believe in late 18, that was rezoned to C1. The adjacent property to the east is commercial, and to the north is commercial as well. So its proximity to downtown, retail, makes it suitable for that location to be commercial. I think the biggest decision to make is whether or not you go with the neighborhood factor or general commercial. So the C1 versus the C2 option. Planning and zoning commission recommended last month, C2.
So if we do that, that little R2 that's left, is that one little commercial building?
R2 is left, let me scroll here.
Little city building.
Yep.
So should we do that at the same time?
I don't think we can. We'd have to look at that legal, we can only adopt that legal description and with all our notifications and everything that's happening, I don't believe that partial is part of that legal.
But yeah, but it's R2.
Right.
And it shouldn't be.
Right. I don't disagree.
You're talking about the one that's already marked C2? Which one are you talking about?
The one north.
The one just to the, to the north of it, right by the creek?
Oh, it's R2, yeah. That's the side of the mountain, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, it's got a building on it.
I think that's, I think it has the two-story duplex, I think.
So that's not by the same property owner? That's a different, I didn't know that those two were separated.
I'm not 100%. I'm basing it on a legal description.
And so what's the, kind of what's the difference? I mean, we're just trying to conceive what would potentially be there in a C2 that would not.
I mean, C2 pretty much encompasses all your commercial uses, besides your open display. So besides your farm implements, supply, your things that are, you have your retail products for sale outside of your store.
That's C3.
That's C3, and that, so you would be prohibiting that, but pretty much any other commercial use, you'd be allowing in a C2 district. And this is discussion only, so we won't have votes tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Are they gonna be up to code on either?
To be conforming in use, the minimums only change would need to be R3 multifamily.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like I said, the property's listed, so when somebody new does buy the property and makes any significant changes, yeah, it's, it'll have to come up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Item number 10, discussion and possible action to approve the updated Talawka Regional Airport Policy Manual.
I know I told the council, but I've had this done by this meeting. I started working on this last week, and I ran into a couple of things, and we're gonna have to make some major changes. I wanted to take that to the airport board before I bring it to council. So I'd like to take this and take it to the next meeting.
I think our recommendation maybe is no action.
Yeah, I would agree with that. So we gotta work good.
Thank you. Item number 11, discussion possible action to close out Talawka Police Dare Fund, transferring $71.38 to the general fund to be used for dare program operating supplies in the Talawka Police Department. Mr. Chapman?
This was a 2012, 2013 grant that we're just now cleaning up our accounting records on, and it's in a nutshell.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions? Roll call.
Counselor Long? Yes. Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 12, discussion possible action to establish CDBG 17 Grant Fund, accept Oklahoma Department of Commerce Community Development Block Grant Award of $85,456, approve the cash match amount of $103,795 from the managerial Trails Path Lanes Account 110518478, and approve the grant budget of $189,51.
This was approved by council back in August of 2017. It's currently underway. We have until May of 2020, and this sets this a grant up in our accounting records.
Is this part of, is this bond money, is this bond money now?
No.
This is, if we're not matching this with bond money, we're matching it with managerial money?
Which has been set aside in the managerial Trails Path Lanes account.
And so is this a designated piece? This is, I mean, for funding a specific piece of the trail, or is this just fund, like general trail money?
We have the 2016 CDBG, which was supposed to build the trail, but because we didn't take action in a timely manner, we lost that grant. They were willing to allow us to continue this grant if we could guarantee that we would have this portion of the trail constructed by the end of May 2020. This piece of the grant is for the lighting, and we'd like to pull work.
And I remember us talking about it. For some reason, I thought that there were, we were matching that with bond money, not money from the managerial account, so.
Ask why we lost that a little more detail on that grant?
On the 2016, those grants are intended to be completed within a one-year or maybe two-year total period, and because we have not moved forward with the actual construction in that timeframe.
Wasn't there something, whatever we're gonna count, our in-kind, our labor is in-kind too? Is that, is our in-kind match, that was, piece of it was being, is that correct?
Well, yes, we had intended, I think, all along, and I understand we had to use our Street Department to do that construction and to do it in-kind for our piece of the match, but that is not something that the smaller entities can do with these grants.
So I go represent us on the EODD?
Yes.
But anyway, I know that every time one of these issues comes up, seems like our historical society and may have to do further investigations and all that. I was wondering, and I know they brought this up several times, that they were still having to extend these things. I wondered if that was part of the reason. I mean, I, I'm just curious. I want to do some further investigation on that, and we'll, on their side.
On this 2017 grant, everything, as far as I know, had been already answered, responded to, and they were willing to roll, or was it the 16, was the 16 that rolled into the 17?
So what the delay was, was we used 13 and 14 for the pavilions, and so we kept extending those two grants. You can only have two grants open at a time, and so we kept extending, kept extending. We didn't finish construction until June, May is when we opened the pavilions down there. So then we started the closeout process, but EODD hadn't started the environmental investigation for the 17. They just did the closeout of the 13 and 14, which that didn't get done in time. And so then they tried, once we did get that closed out, then they tried to fit in, within a couple of months, that actual environmental assessment for the 16 grant. And so then they, when we contacted them for release of funds, they said, well, you got 30 days to get your RFP out, you gotta get a contractor on it and have it awarded and completed in three months. Well, there was no way that we weren't gonna do an RFP. We were always intending on in-kind services, and so right there was an issue. And so we had such a tight timeline that we chose that, instead of jeopardizing any future funding by not meeting the timelines that they prescribed us, that we voluntarily deobligated. So I take 16 back, can we have 17? It's the same project. It's the lighting on the same project. And so now they're allowing us to use the environmental that we did in the late, you know, the last innings for 16 as the 17. And so we're able to hustle up. I have an RFP ready to go for a contractor or electrician to install the lighting, and then our match, if you will, will be the purchase of the lights themselves. And so we'll get that done before April's my goal, you know, so we have time to close them out and apply for 2020.
And as far as, you said we can only have two open at a time. Do we have a, is there an 18 that's on the, we don't know yet?
There was so much in there that was going on that was open and trying to close, and we didn't apply for the 15 or the 18, so, yeah.
16 and 17 were still open.
Yep. Answer your question.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Much better job of explaining that. Yes, sir?
I have a quick question. That $103,000, was that encumbered? Is that money set, or is that coming out of this year's budget?
It is money that was there and was rolled forward into this year's budget, so it's there.
Okay, so it is a budgeted item?
It is a budgeted item. I make a motion to approve as presented.
My second.
Is there further questions, discussion? Not roll call.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long? Yes. Motion carried.
Item number 13, discussion possible action to close out the School Resource Officer Expense Fund and transfer the fund balance of $321.33 to the Cops in Schools Retention Fund. Mr. Chairman?
This is a 2015 Last Activity Grant. That simply does more cleanup than the accounting records.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Further questions or discussion? Not roll call.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long? Yes. Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number 14, discussion possible action to remove Daniel Curtis and Jason Nichols and appoint Mayor Sue Kaden and Intermodal City Administrator Allen Chapman as authorized representatives for the Security Bank Card Center account for the City of Talawka Purchasing Cards.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What's the, these are, these are the fee cards?
Yes, sir.
And so what's the, I guess, what's the difference? Do you get card? You get card?
No, these are not us getting cards. These are acting as administrators so that you can call and make changes.
You can actually call and talk to the bank about the card.
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
If there's no further discussion or questions, roll call.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long? Yes. Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 15, proposed executive session. We ask you to exit regular session and enter into executive session.
Second.
Can I roll call, please?
Counselor Long? Yes. Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Reconvening at 8:09. Item number 16, discussion possible action related to City of Talawka versus LD Tannell et al., Cherokee County Case Number CJ 201658.
I make a motion to approve the global settlement author for Cherokee County CJ 2016 sweepstakes and authorize the mayor, city administrator, and city attorney to sign all this third paperwork.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Roll call. Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long? Yes. Motion carried.
Item number 17, discussion and possible action related to City of Talawka versus Springwater Properties LLC et al., Cherokee County Case Number CV 201843. I'm hearing no action. Okay, come on. Moving forward to number 18, discussion and possible action related to the potential purchase and/or appraisal of property rights and/or easement of that property located at Part 1 of Lot 1 and Lot 18, City Park Addition to the City of Talawka, Oklahoma, more particularly described. described as follows to wit, beginning at a point 8 feet north and 120 feet east of southwest corner of said Lot 1, then north 50 feet, then east parallel to the south line of said Lot 1, to the westerly line of Bluff Avenue, and southwesterly along the westerly line of Bluff Avenue to a point due east of the point of beginning.
Oh, that's very good.
I make a motion to approve purchase or easement for $20,000 is what the mayor said.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Discussion?
Is that a much denied?
It is, huh?
It is?
Yes. Do we have roll call?
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 19, adjournment?
I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.